Four board meeting here in Taylorsville, North Carolina at our board conference room. And so the first thing is to call this meeting to order and then to be followed with a pledge of allegiance to be led by Mr. McLean.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the which is space, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. So have all board members had an opportunity to review the agenda and what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
So we have first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. Next, Dr. Del Revis is going to present to us honors and recognitions. Can all, everyone hear me? Yeah, okay, good.
Good evening, Ms. Superintendent Griffin, Board Chair Mr. Agüez, Board Chair, Vice Chair Mr. Reese, board members. So we're going to switch it up a little bit different than how it was published. So first I'd like to ask Officer Chastity Hamby and Chief Mike Millsaps to come up. One of them has an engagement and so we want to get him through first. Ms. McLean and, or Mr. McLean and Ms. Ryan, would y'all come up too?
We felt we should be saying kudos.
All right, so these two are here tonight because they just completed their school resource officer training and this is the highest certification that an SRO can have. It requires 400 additional hours of training, that's 100 hours of core classes and 280 hours of elective classes. Y'all come on up. Officers are required to do in-service hours every year, this like students or like staff has to do for CEUs. So in other words, what they did was on top of what they have to do to continue to be an officer. So that's pretty remarkable. That's a lot of time you gave to this. Some of the classes that they took were ethics, mental health, first aid. There's one that I thought might be interesting, it was called verbal judo. The certification normally takes a lot of years to complete, so we are proud of Officer Hamby and Chief Mike for finishing up. And we are grateful for our partnership with the Taylorsville Police Department and the Alexander County Sheriff's Department for their work to place an officer in every school to help protect students and staff. The resources are, the resource officers are in our schools thanks to a grant for which several people had a hand in getting it and our county commission provided some matching funds to make this all happen. So we thank you and we congratulate you. Okay, so you're gonna have to squish even a little bit more. All friends here, so, all right, congratulations, you guys. And I'm gonna take three photos. So smile big, one, two, three. One, or I don't know, one, two, three. Excellent, great job. Stay poised.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Dagenhart, will you join us next?
Sure.
Okay. And Carter Payne, will you come up and with whomever you want to bring up with you? I hope you got to see Carter this summer. We posted some stuff after the National Beta Club Convention, which was in Georgia and the North Carolina School Board Association picked up our posts and celebrated it statewide. So hopefully he's a familiar face and a familiar name. So a patriotic melody helped, excuse me, medley helped our first honorary get some national notice. Carter Payne performed a series of songs at the National Beta Club Convention this summer, as I said, and he won first place in the instrumental category. Payne competed against 31 other students from around the country in the semifinals and then two others who were, went to the top three. He only had two minutes to impress the judges with that medley that he had put together and he played in front of a crowd of about 5,000. Pretty doggone, big crowd for your ensemble. So we shared those news results and we wanted to just recognize him here at the board meeting. We want to congratulate to his Beta Club sponsor, that's Ms. Reed, Donna Reed's with him. And Payne, Ms., Carter will be at sophomore at the high school next year and/or in a week or so, right? We expect to see more good things from him because he's got a long career ahead of him in, at the, at the high school. And he also has with him his music teacher, that's Ms. Shelby McDaniel, and we appreciate her being here tonight. So welcome, congratulations.
Do we get to photo bomb you guys?
Congratulations, Carter, great job. Carter, are you here? Does y'all want to be up? Yes, yes. All right, now we're really gonna have to squish, squish, squish. Congratulations to mom and dad too, I know you're very proud. All right.
So since mom and daddy, I gotta do it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, Mr. Robinson, would you come up next? And we will talk about Skills USA. So we would ask Bentley Gilbert, and Bentley, who do you want to bring up? We've got mom, dad, and Mr. Bowles, right? Bentley took part this summer in the National Skills USA Competition for the Carpentry Category. And he finished first in the state competition and then he finished second in the nation. And I talked with dad and he gave me a little insight. Bentley had to build a miniature house. He was under some time pressure. It was time, they gave him a blueprint, they gave him the materials, and he had to kind of wing it. And he was among 6,000 state champions who competed this summer in several different events. So Bentley's already graduated and he's out in the world working with dad, I believe, at Neil Construction in Hickory. And we want to recognize and also thank his instructor, carpentry instructor, Mr. Josh Bowles. He's also the trade, he also is the Skills USA advisor, so he manages the kids who go to these competitions. So we appreciate his work. Congratulations.
You want the metal off? I got it. You want to put it on?
Yeah.
Put it on. Awesome, but that thing on, man.
Just like the Olympics.
Can't have too much blame.
Sink come on up. And Mr. Reese, would you join them? Okay. All right, so these young men earned a first place award this summer in the FFA State Convention in what's become known as the Gator Awards. So back in February, they started the competition in the western region where they were up against 25 other schools. And the competition in Salisbury resulted in three winners who then went on to compete against students from the eastern part of the state. That competition, I believe, was in Raleigh. The students had a piece of equipment and they acted as if a customer had told them that that equipment was acting up and they were timed, they only had 15 minutes, is that right, boys? Okay? Yes? An hour, my bad, okay? And they had to work together, that's better. Still pretty impressive, but, okay. So they had to work together, they had to act like they were talking to the customer, get information, talk to each other as teammates, had to get the, figure out what was going wrong, had to act like they were ordering parts to get the equipment fixed. So they had like a customer service counter, et cetera, et cetera. And they had to make sure they were doing this all in a safe manner, so they had to wear protective equipment and so on. And they were able to, as I said, finish first. Congratulations for their representation at this state competition.
Congratulations.
Mr. Bowman? Okay, continuing with the FFA Awards, we would like to recognize Tyler Curly, Colt McKee, Isaiah Rice, and Weston Rogers, and their advisor, Mr. Cook. So these boys worked this summer at the competition in a, as a ag mechanics team. They finished third in the state in the FFA Competition for Ag Mechanics. They had to weld, they had to show off electrical skills by wiring lights, had to show their small engine skills, took a written test, include some math and problem solving, sounds like a whole lot of school for summertime. So we are proud of you guys and appreciate your third place finish in FFA Competition. Good job.
Congratulations.
Great job. Good job.
Congratulations.
All right, so lastly, but not least, we'll call up Dixie Smith. All right, so Dixie, go ahead. Dixie was recognized by the FFA statewide for her project, and that's a project that reflects more than 1,700 hours of work.
Wow.
Dixie owns her own business and the recognition is for a work-based learning experience. She had to put in the work, but then also had to write an application and her honor is second place statewide. So let me tell you a little what I thought was novel about her application. So she adopts out animals, Australian cattle dogs, and she asks them, asks folks who come to adopt to sign a contract. And so if the family decides that the animal is a little too much for them, those dogs are pretty high strung, if anybody has anybody with one. But if they decide that it's just too much, then she asks them through the contract to return the dog to her so that she can then find a new appropriate home for those Australian cattle dogs. So she earned second place in the state for her work and that, she is a rising senior. So I feel like we're going to hear more out of Dixie. We appreciate you.
Congratulations.
And I failed Dixie, I had to particularly touch together. Thank you very much.
We were swept. Everyone's been coming here a lot, so congratulations. Two, one, two, three. So just to wrap it up, we need to thank the amazing FFA advisors, they do a great
Do we have any speakers for public comment?
job supporting students. They have an amazing chapter that's super active.
We have no public comment at this point for this meeting, very well.
Those folks who work with them are Mr. Scotty Cook, Mr. Tyler Mitchell, and Mr. JD Sink.
So next is the consent agenda. Has the board had the opportunity to review the consent agenda material and what is the
So good job to them, good job to the students for representing Alexander County.
pleasure of the board?
Moved to breathe.
Congratulations.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. McLean.
At this point in our meeting, our guests may be excused if they'd like as we move into
All in favor say aye.
the formal business of the meeting, but we appreciate y'all and all have a good night.
Aye.
All opposed? No, the ayes have it, the consent agenda is unanimously approved.
Thank y'all for coming.
Next is the reports, the Board of Education Committee reports. Do we have any committee chairman who wish to provide updates on your committee reports?
Just from the Boosters Club, the Alexander County Central Sports have their Cougar cards available, so just want to encourage everyone to buy a Cougar card and support the community and, or sports that they see. Thank you.
The Education Foundation met in first part of August, and I'm going to throw out some dates and you'll probably hear these from now to November, so be patient with me. August 30th, we're having the Sports Hall of Fame halftime ceremony, so that will be on the new turf. Yay. And if any of you guys like to come, we always, the past inductees of the Hall of Fame meet, we meet at 50 yard line, we've got some seating there, so you're welcome to come and, and hang out with, with those fellows and ladies. October 26th is our golf tournament. It is at Brushy, starts at 12 with lunch and the tee time is one. So if you would like to do a whole sponsor and have anyone that does, or if you want to get a team, please let me know. Our Hall of Fame ceremony will be November 25th and the 2024 class will be announced the first part of September, so be on the lookout for that.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, not specifically a committee report, but do want to put in a plug for my kid's school, they are having a festival of tables on Thursday. It is going to be from 6:30 to 7:15. The school is going to unveil a bale that formerly hung in the old Hidnap Elementary School. It has been refurbished and so, board members, if you are able to attend, that would be wonderful. It is $10 per, per person to attend and I believe our superintendent is going to be speaking at that.
I'm looking forward to it, absolutely, yes sir.
Mr. Reese, can we give you our money?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other committee updates? Very well. So then we move on to agenda item 3B, the facilities update. Mr. Campbell?
Good evening, Chairman Agüez, Vice Chairman Reese, Superintendent Griffin, board members. I've never felt so popular in my life as I have this summer. First time in my life, I actually felt like people want to talk to me, but half the time they don't. The biggest question is, you can all ask, is the turf going to be there? So, next slide please. So I was presented upon request a couple of weeks ago because of all the, the rain that we've had. My calculations on the rain gauge is we have had 19 inches of rain in 21 days.
Wow.
So that's a bunch. We've had five dry days in the last 21. This morning, we didn't expect raining, we had rain.
Yeah.
So we approached the geo surfaces with the question, are we going to play our game? Do we need to move? We made, started making preparations to move the game and they, they came back with a schedule, which you can see up there, the, the schedule that they gave us was that we, they had 17 days from that point, so that, they gave me a 17 day schedule. They were going to do soil stabilization, which they did, completed by the six. They regraded the field, put out geo fabric, laid the base layer, and today, we'll just skip down to Monday, August the 12th. Their goal was to have turf charged laying on the field. I, I would just say, they have, were being amazing to work with. The soil stabilization process, they incurred at their expense, which what they did was they come in and put a lime-seamate mixture on the field, tilled it in to stabilize the soil so that they could continue to work and get it on time. As of today, when I come over here, we had 40 yards of turf rolled out on the field. You'll notice on here that the infield is scheduled to be done on 8/20, 8/21, which is two days prior to the first game. That will give them a day to practice, they are on that schedule. The concrete event install, they are doing now, that was going to be their last thing, but they're doing it as they're working. So we will, I'm going to say it right now, they have said it all along, we will play our game on 8/23 at Alexander Central High School, which is absolutely amazing to me. I had doubts, but they have stood by that the entire time.
That's awesome.
Patrick Watkins, the band director, has been taking screenshots and I've got a little video that he has made that I would like for y'all to, to be able to see here. This is a 36 day process. So he has been taking individual screenshots every day since the project started from three different locations, as you can see. It, it's coming along. So I have a slide at the end that says questions, but let's just go one project at a time while my mind is focusing on that. So if y'all have any questions about the turf field?
It was good to turn in tonight, see gold posts and green turf going down. You know, we've had, we've had a lot of rain, our, our county needed the rain.
Yes.
We have a lot of people depending on livelihood, depends on the, the farming. And, you know, we need the rain, but I'm glad to see them coming through and getting it done.
Yeah. First, first time in my life I've ever prayed for a drought for.
I'd like to publicly thank Chris and, and his team, maintenance men and workers and employees, they, they've all had a, had a part in what's going on to, to make this happen and certainly our, our contracted services have come in and done an outstanding job of, of fighting the elements, but yet trying to, to meet that deadline, so I'd like to say thank you, Chris.
One note, we had the $169,000 in contingencies and everybody thought we'd blow through that. Well, we did spend a, a portion of that, around $60,000, $59,000 on drainage to fix that, but we, there's been nothing else, any other costs that they have done, they have absorbed as a company, so they've been true to their word there too.
Partnership.
And thank you to Mr. Watkins for the, the pictures.
Yes.
That's nice to have.
That was nice, when he emailed that to me today, I had to put that in there.
Is that on the website that people can watch it or?
Not yet. He, he's going to do something at the very end when it's all done. He, he shared that with me today to have for this, so I get to be special.
It's a great communication tool to let the community know just what's progressed, the complexity that you've managed through, I mean, you guys have done an outstanding job.
I, I will say this, this has been a seven day a week, pretty much 15, 17, 18, 19, 24 hour day job for me, just answering the phone calls and responding to emails. I get up sometimes at 4:30 in the morning and I have an email waiting for me to respond on it, but they have been amazing to work with and it has come along. I actually went down there before and walked across it and I went down there and they said, no, you can't walk on it. I kind of put my head down, didn't even realize, did it, walked away and they go, we're just kidding. So I'm like, I finally get to walk on it and you tell me I can't, so that was good. Any more questions on the turf project?
Great job.
Tennis courts. Tennis courts, I, I put on here, it's been a weather nightmare for the tennis court. So the tennis courts, the, the whole process, they put down the turf, had warm weather, to do the next layers, it can't be too hot because it can't dry too fast. So we had super hot weather for a long time and then it went straight to super wet weather. So that's the two things we could not have asked for, for that project. Currently, we have gotten the coatings on that require dry, 100% dry, could not have any moisture to it, we finally had four days. And so they're in the process of painting and sealing and putting the lines on it, they've got the, I don't know if you noticed when you come in, but the first two courts have the, the kind of blue, blue courts and they still had to paint the grain outline and things, so two courts should be done, they were going to finish today, but we had unexpected 3/4 inch of rain this morning. So they should be back, they have told me that they, their plan is to be, have the courts ready by Monday, weather permitting. It's all weather permitting, but that'll be exciting to be over because that's been a three-year project.
Yeah.
Over, son. So any questions on the tennis courts? The next one I get questions about all the time. Sugarloaf Gymnasium Office is targeted final inspections. They were paving, going to pave today, but once again, the rain held that off, they're going to pave tomorrow, start paving tomorrow. Their target final inspection date is August the 19th. That'll allow us to get our TCO or CO to get into the building. Everybody, the, the question's always asked to me, why are they behind on the project? Why are they behind on the project? Well, their substantial completion date on that project that we signed in the contract is actually September the 26th. So if they turn that building over to us on August the 19th, they're five weeks ahead of schedule. They've been dealing with the rain too and all the projects and they have been amazing to work with constantly. They have been out there Saturday, working, Sunday, working. They're trying to get us in the building before school starts. Mr. Mayberry, I, I told you I'd give you the opportunity if you'd like to say anything?
I'll, just, I'll say phenomenal, phenomenal work. One day last week, crap, before all the heavy rain, and they were out there 11:30, 9:00, paving, besides superintendent, one of the guys from Pat, over out, 11:30, paving, trying to roll the 30 and just keep us on track. If they, if they didn't do that, I don't think there's any way we can have a target favor.
Yeah. The, the, they, they've been amazing. I put on a little bit about a budget, the contract bid that was approved by the board was seven point, well, was 4.727. The contract bid that was approved by the board was seven point, well, was four-point-seven-two-seven million dollars. Current project, currently, the project is estimated to be completed for four-point-four-seven-two million. We still have the contingencies, about two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars of unused contingencies that will come off of that. This was a grant that was applied for, for five-point-three with additional five percent of matching from the county of two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. The remaining funds of those will be used for alternate of that point, for the additional alternates, which should reduce the amount of hasn't sales tax and other money that we have to contribute. Project that big, there's been a lot of changes coming under budget without using all that, it's been pretty impressive to me, too. Any questions on that?
No, that's just a testament to excellent project management on your part.
So every part will, that will be done, the boiler removal, the front entrance and the gym, or is this just the gym?
The media center, and that's alternates one, two, and three, they will not start until this project is done.
Okay.
That was what was approved at a later date, start when this was over.
Thank you. Thanks for everything, getting these projects together. It's nice to see them all coming together right here, time for school to start, or right there at it.
I would love for all of y'all to come up and look, and tour Sugarloaf when it's done, because I know there's been a lot of effort on fifteen, sixteen years of the board looking at that. I would love for y'all to come up for that.
Look, Dr. Griffin, I'm sure you'll be letting us know a date when you want us to all come on up.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll work something out.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Outstanding. Next on the agenda is the Community Eligibility Provision, CEP and Summer Feeding Update. Ms. Kathy Cottle?
Good evening, Board Members. I apologize for not getting you this early. I will not do that in the future, but I have been busy handing out lunches and breakfasts. That first page will show you the number of breakfasts and lunches we did at summer feeding last year. I hast for the work going on at Sugarloaf, because Monday, I handed out meals in the Dollar General parking lot.[742.12][742.12](laughter) There was no getting in, so it was really funny. When I saw the driveway was blocked, I went into Dollar General, jumped out of my car, and asked them about parking over there with our new bus, and they said, the manager's not here, we'll have to ask the manager. I said, fine, just let me know. I go back out, she comes out and waves, it's okay, there's a deputy sitting in front of the fire academy, and people are trying to go in the driveway, they don't see the bus because the trees block it. And he just gets up and moves out in the road to block it, and he's directing traffic for us, so we were able to get our meals out. But as you can see, we have been really busy. We've been giving out about six thousand meals every Monday. Sometimes it's over, this past week, it was a little, a lot of people are going, going on vacation, we had a little over five thousand this week. But since the first week, it's been five to six thousand meals, and it has been a really big turnout of people. So, getting the non-congregate sites and having an evening one at Taylorsville, that's our biggest site. Stony Point is the second largest, and the principal, I will say, has been helping pass out meals. We got that on the webpage. But it is going well, and we will give out our last meals this coming Monday, so that should finish us. So we're getting kids fed up until school starts. The meals we give out Monday will go through next Sunday, the next Sunday, so they will get food until time for school. We have applied for CEP. For those of you who don't understand community eligibility, it's based on the direct certification, and I upload that information. We lost, when we entered this, when I told you guys about it last year, I told you we might lose money, but we had over seven-hundred thousand in the bank to start with. And we did, we dropped a little over three-hundred thousand, and that second sheet shows you the expenses and income and where we stand at the first of July, is that four-hundred-plus-thousand. So, we want to do CEP again this year. I've reconfigured the grouping so that the early college, which is the lowest percentage of freedom reduced, is in a group by themselves, and everybody else is together. And we will have enough in our fund balance in child nutrition to finish this coming year. We'll probably lose a little, but I met with my managers today, and I said, we've got to do one of two things, either increase our participation or cut our labor hours. And so they are going to try diligently, they're going to talk to the principals about making sure all the kids come through the line for lunch. We've, we are expanding our pick-three, some of you saw how well that was working when you visited Wittenburg especially, and, well, and Sugarloaf as well. But the kids bringing their lunch boxes, they can still get a reimbursable lunch, will get the full reimbursement if they just choose three things. So if they decide to bring a sandwich from home, they can pick a fruit, a vegetable, and a meal, and we get reimbursed for the meal. So we're hoping principals will allow the kids to all go through the line, especially at lunch. West has already said they have, they want to do an after-the-bell breakfast, we're going to accommodate that, they think it will increase. We've also worked to minimize some of the offerings to the most popular choices. We have a biscuit every day, sausage or chicken biscuit, that's one choice for breakfast. The high school and middle schools thinks that will really increase the participation. So we're going to attack it that way. Hopefully, we won't lose money this year. A few years ago, we got a lot of money from master funds, and we're not getting those extra. We know that our cost per individual with benefits is going to go up about five-hundred dollars a person, but we, we anticipate we'll be able to at least stay under the three-hundred-thousand dollars. And if we don't break even by the end of the year, next year, we will probably just do the elementary schools, and there is no question that elementary schools will be reimbursed enough to pay for all of those children eating free breakfast and lunch. Questions, concerns? You probably don't have any more than I do, but...[1021.13][1021.13](laughter)
I'll just say, a tremendous job. Miss Ryan, probably say, eight or ten years ago, this board would look at having to figure out a way to come up with thousands or hundreds of thousand dollars to break even with nutrition. And now you're feeding, our county don't realize the money families are getting to save the whole year.
Right.
With this, just every day, not counting the summer, you give away twenty-one thousand meals this summer that families don't have to try to figure out a way to come up with, so it's just tremendous.
Well, it's actually almost fifty thou, forty...
Okay, that's even better.
Forty-two thousand, because twenty-one thousand, six hundred and four are breakfast, and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six are lunches. So it's almost over forty-two thousand dollars of meals that we've given out.
I understand why you couldn't get this to us sooner, because you get so busy doing all that.
Well, and...
Good job, thank you.
Every day that I'm in, every Monday that I'm in town, I'm helping promote the program and being out to hand out meals with the girls on the bus, and parents are so appreciative, I can't tell you how much they appreciate that they're getting these meals, so.
That's a great thing.
Any questions?
That, that, that number's unreal. I, I thank you to you and your staff.
Well, they, they call me a slave driver, but I'm trying, I'm trying to be out there with them, helping to make, know that I really believe in the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sharon Mahaffey, our Chief Financial Officer, is going to provide the finance report.
I provided you with a chart showing our initial allotments this year compared to our allotments last year. We lost four allotted positions and six CTE months of employment. We lost in DSSF funds, teachers', but we gained in teachers' assistance, low wealth, EC, and at-risk. If you'll remember, I told you, I was afraid to tell you that we were going to get an additional five-hundred thousand dollars in low wealth. Well, I went to a meeting in late July, and they took away a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that, and so then, they gave it back. So, as of right now, we have that five-hundred thousand dollars. At the retreat this, this year, I discussed, the name of the presentation that Andrea Robinett and I did was, "Do You Look Good in Orange?"[1196.22][1196.22](laughter) And, and we went over some of the, what I think are basics of, for principals of how to stay out of trouble and not wear orange, the wrong kind of orange. We had our first bookkeeper meeting of the year today, and we plan to have those for the first three months of school monthly, and then bimonthly for the rest of the year, and we're really excited about those. I think the school bookkeepers really enjoyed it. We also plan to have meetings with directors and the bookkeepers in each of the departments bimonthly or quarterly this year, and this is the one, one of the things that I really enjoy doing, and that's teaching, teaching school finance. So we'll be working with them to, on their budgets, and doing budget reviews, and in the process, trying to make the best choices of the money that we have. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
One question, where is our fund balance at this point?
Well, I always like to say first, that fund balance is set on June thirtieth of the previous year, and you carry that fund balance through the end of the year, and you just go up and down, you know, as plus and minuses. I think we will come, we will have at least a million dollars in fund balance when we end this year.
So it is exactly what you projected when we were having our original budget discussions?
At least, there might be a little more there.
Good.
And Chair Argüés, we've had many conversations in regards to our budget and what that looks like. We are, Sharon is currently in her staff going through an audit right now, and working hard to make sure that we have everything that we need to do well there, and I'm sure we will. And then the continued conversations, as Hughes referring to, we're looking to break things down at least quarterly with, with all departments and everything that's going on within our, within our school system, to make sure that we have accurate predictions and updates as to where we are per each of our board meetings, and then as we predict and as we were able to monitor things, that, that we can continue to, to keep operating the way that we, that we should. So I'm extremely pleased with, with the Finance Department, all of our directors, we had a lot of conversation about that at retreat. So, we are, we are certainly understanding as to the necessity of where we need to be with budget, and I commend not only Sharon, but, but our district leaders and teachers and everybody for, for having a hand in getting this thing straight.
That's wonderful. And, and the question, the reason that I ask, and I think it's important, is to send the message that your forecast was very accurate, and I think that is when we speak about financial matters, one's ability to provide accurate forecasts instills confidence in every other conversation that comes from there, and you've demonstrated that your team is in full command of the situation, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, and, and thank you, and Shannon and her team will be in Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday this week, and then I think that she plans to be, present the budget in October, November, or present the audit in October.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Board Members? Very well. Our Superintendent report.
Great, thank you very much. I have a couple of things to report out on, all accomplishments that I'm extremely proud of. First of all, we had our administrative retreat last week, August fifth, sixth, and seventh. We had that tree, retreat at the App State Hickory Campus, to where all our directors and district leaders and principals, assistant principals got together and spent three days with professional development, talking about just what I spoke to you about, and a lot of that being our budget and where we are, and open, honest conversation. Much of our time also was spent on school culture, and, and I think that goes beyond just the school. I think that has to do with district culture and what we're looking to have here within our wonderful school district. So, the feedback from, from our administrators, the dialogue that we had, the conversations that took place were extremely positive, and I look forward to working with these leaders as we, we drive this, this school system forward in a positive direction. So, very, very, very complimentary of the things that took place there, and I can't say enough about our leaders and what they brought to the table there. The second thing, for the second year in a row, and I think this kind of goes hand-in-hand of what took place at the retreat, the state is praising Alexander County teachers and staff for this district's superior performance with our, our young readers. Our State Superintendent Catherine Truitt presented to the State Board on August first, and she gave accolades to Alexander County and our test scores and the things that we had accomplished last year. So I want to say hats off to the leadership here, hats off to our teachers and administrators, and most importantly, those students for getting their job done. Extremely proud of that, that we can be recognized at the state level, and that's the second year in a row. So, so great job to all those that were involved. I was not here, that was all, all of you guys making that happen, and I'm extremely proud of your accomplishments, so great, great job to you. Third thing, I'd like to recognize that Alexander Central High School was recognized by North Carolina High School Athletic Association for being an ejection-free school last year. So, to Mr. Leo and Nathan Robinson, our athletic director, your coaches and leaders out there, and that stems from the top, Jacob and y'all's, yours and Nathan's leadership about what the expectations are, and we compete on the field, but we do it in a professional manner, so I'm extremely proud of, of that accomplishment. It's a great job. Opening session for all of our staff members, we held an auditorium on August twentieth at nine AM. We'll be celebrating the beginning of twenty-four, twenty-five school year and recognize our of-the-year winners also at, at that event. I would certainly invite all board members to attend, we would love to have you there. We're hoping for an enjoyable opening session to where we can recognize those of the years and celebrate this upcoming school year, and, and that's what I want for that event, is for it to be a celebration, for us to have smiles on our face and enjoy being around each other, and enjoy the fact that we have the best job in the world. And finally, please be mindful that there'll be many buses, student drivers that'll be on the roads in these upcoming weeks as we begin school and start the new school year, and I just ask that all of our community members and citizens recognize that and know that some of those young teenage drivers might be a bit nervous, or excited, the teachers will probably be nervous and excited coming back, but our roads will be full, and with the buses out, knowing to make sure that, that we keep our children safe and those coming to and from, so please be aware of that. And finally, just some dates for upcoming events, just want to bring to your attention. Yesterday, our early college students returned, I was able to go out there and greet those students, they had smiles on their faces and very excited, and Mary Brown, our principal, was there with her staff, and they were doing a fabulous job of greeting those students. And of course, they're on the calendar, the college calendar, and a bit different from our traditional schools, but they were, they were back and eager to learn and do a great job this year, so good job, Mary, on that. August fifteenth, all our traditional schools will have an optional workday. Also on the fifteenth, Festival of Tables and the Bell Dedication that Vice Chair Reeves spoke about just, just a bit ago, it hit night, so that'll, that'll be this Thursday. The twentieth, our opening session that I discussed, also will have the Student Success Centers Open House from three to four-thirty, Alexander Central's Open House from four to six, the twenty-second, elementary schools' open houses will take place from four-thirty to six-thirty, middle school on the twenty-second also open houses, twenty-sixth, students return back to school, and then finally, September second, Labor Day holiday, we will not have any school for that particular day. So, a lot's happening. Our days are full, and the nights are very, very short, they seem like here coming up, but we're, we're doing our best to get school going. I can't say enough about the things that are going on within this district, and I'm excited to get those students back, because that's what we all are here for, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Great update. So that concludes the reports portion of this agenda. We have unfinished business, Board of Education, new policies, second reading, Ms. Sharon Mahaffey.
Dr. Griffin forgot to invite you to dress up as the seventies, eighties, or nineties.
That's true, we would love to see you in costume as you come to our opening session.
Okay, we have a, a policy... We have a, a policy up for second reading tonight, administering medications to students, policy sixty-three, sixty-one, twenty-five, and I have had no suggestions for changes, so I ask for approval on second reading.
Move to approve policy sixty-one, twenty-five as presented.
Second. So, we have a first, and we have a second from Mr. McLean, and first from Ms. Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is approved unanimously.
Okay. We have a, a new policy this evening, emergency administration of, well, I'll just call it Narcan, policy fifty, twenty-three, sixty-one, twenty-eight, seventy-two, sixty-eight is the reference, and elimination of policy fifty, twenty-three, sixty-one, twenty-six, seventy-two, forty-five, it's just replacing that policy, the opioid policy. I've had no suggestions or changes, and would like to ask for approval on second reading. That, I, I hope I didn't, I wasn't confusing on that. We had a policy fifty, twenty-three, opioid antagonist, and we're replacing it with emergency administration of Narcan.
So, more specific then. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Second by?
Me.
Mr. Daganhart? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion approved unanimously. Sorry, my hearing aids lost me after we said.
We have two policies up for first reading tonight, insurance and school finance officer. So, if you want any changes, here's your chance. I'll bring this back for second reading next month.
Very well. So, you knocked out both agenda items four and five at the same time. That's correct.
Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. Very well. That concludes the open session portion of this agenda. We will enter into closed session. All in favor to adjourn open session?
I'll make a motion.
Make some motion, Ms. Ryan?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daganhart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. This motion is served by close. We will enter into closed session.